Well, good afternoon and welcome to the Asheville City Council Forum for sorry, for the Asheville City Council Candidate Forum hosted by Carolina Public Press and 103.3 Asheville FM Community Radio. I'm KP Whaley, General Manager of 103.3 Asheville FM Community Radio. And I'm sitting next to virtually Frank Taylor, Managing Editor of the Carolina Public Press. Together, we'll be moderating the forum featuring the five candidates running for the three open seats of the Asheville City Council. We'll be taking questions from the audience as well. So if you're attending via the Zoom link, you can post your questions in the chat section. And if there is time at the end of this forum, we'll try to get to as many questions as possible. If you are joining us on 103.3 FM or streaming us at Asheville FM, I'd like to thank you for joining us and let you know that Asheville FM is a listener-supported nonprofit radio station programmed by community volunteers. And we produce diverse and eclectic programming that inspires our listeners to build connections across our communities as well as to discover new music and ideas. As part of our community news coverage, we're very proud to be a co-host of this event. And now let me take a moment to introduce my fellow moderator, Frank Taylor, Managing Editor of Carolina Public Press.
Thank you, KP. I'm Frank Taylor, Managing Editor at Carolina Public Press. And we're a statewide nonprofit investigative news organization that started almost 10 years ago in western North Carolina. We are now statewide, although we're still based here in Asheville. Or these days, we're based in individual basements and so on, of course. But our content is always free at our website, Carolina Public Press, the org. We also want to thank our partner, JM ProTV, who is streaming the event and translating into Spanish. And the Spanish translation will appear later on our website at carolinapublicpress.org. Since we only have 90 minutes, we will forego an introductory round and instead follow candidates or allow candidates an opportunity for closing remarks at the end of the forum. So let's get started. First topic, traffic and affordable housing. What should the city be doing to ensure that sufficient affordable housing exists along with the transportation infrastructure to accommodate those residents? Related to this, what regulations of new hotels and converting hotels to Airbnbs should be part of this? And I'll address this first to Kim Roney.
Okay, with just a very short period of time to answer this question, I want to say that transportation and affordable housing, deeply affordable housing for the people of Asheville who live and work here is very important to me. I understand the pressure of living on stagnant wages and as the economy is we're in an emergency situation. So what sort of solutions we can expect from our city council is for us to update our Unified Development Ordinance so that when we're making decisions that impact our planning and zoning, that it will have an equity lens and it'll address our climate emergency, our stated climate emergency with meaningful action. We need to see through the Tunnel Road Corridor Study, the Hendersonville Road Corridor Study. These are corridors that are the access points for our neighborhoods that are in close proximity. So that'll include looking at ways that we can have housing density on major corridors, that we can have mixed-use developments, that people can get to the things that they need every day without having to get in a car. We need to look at the transit master plan and start getting that work done, collaborating with the county and regional partners so that we can expand our evening service hours. We can increase the frequency so that people don't have to wait so long to be able to use the bus. And we need to ensure that when NC DOT is redeveloping a road, that they're using their own adopted Ashto Green Book guidelines, which were adopted in January of this year. So that I was making sure that everybody, no matter what form of transportation you're using to get to your destination, that the goal is to get to your destination safely. Now, you also mentioned Airbnb's in the midst of all of this, and there's like too much to unpack with all of these things. But I will say, as a person who runs a small business, my piano studio, in my home, I do support the home stay permits as they are available and understand those are small businesses that make it possible for people to afford their housing. So thank you for that question.
Sage Turner.
All right. Good morning, everybody, and thank you for hosting us. I have a lot to say about affordability. So I heard questions about hotels, affordable housing, STR. So we have a lot of policies that the city can implement. And we have about $25 million in housing bonds that need to be implemented. We have, I would say about 1,000 new affordable units and opening their doors in the next five years, whether that be through city-owned land and high-impact sites like 319 Biltmore or South Charlotte Street, whether that be recent decision that City Council, September 22nd, to fund a small developer to build new affordable housing with a housing trust loan from the city. That can mean utilizing the land banking money, $3 million we set aside from the bond, implementing the land, the community land trust, which recently just got some funding for operating expenses to get that moving. We have purchased or under contract on some land out on D-Review that can become a large community. It's adjacent to another project. We are trying to do a mixed income and mixed ownership model. So we have a lot of activity around affordable housing. It's one of the primary reasons that I'm running. I serve as the Chair of the City's Affordable Housing Committee. And I've been doing this work for about five years. I'm very confident in where we're going as a city. I'm very excited. And I know it sometimes appears as that it is a desperate city concern right now, and I just want folks to know that it is coming and we can be hopeful. So I heard about STRs in there, and I do support the idea that the home stay can help locals stay in their homes and afford the increasing utilities and taxes that are occurring. I also think there's an opportunity for short-term rentals to help create affordable housing. We had a project proposed last year that has since withdrawn, that was going to be about 50% short-term rentals. And the higher rents from the short-term rentals were going to make the other half of the project and apartments affordable long-term permanently, I believe. And I love that idea. So sometimes we need to take what we're really good at and put it to work to fix the problems we have, and that's a great example. Think that was all the pieces. Transportation was mentioned, and I think this is actually important because all too often, when I talk with community members, folks say, well, I don't understand, why can't they just buy land or houses farther out where it's more affordable? And the problem there is that once you get farther from the city, you may or may not have access to public transportation, but you also spend more money on transportation in general. So there's an H&amp;T Index Fund, which tells us information about cities. It's a national effort, but in Asheville, it tells us that our folks spend 25% of their income on transportation. So if you are living out in the county, or if you have found somewhere more affordable to live because it's farther out, it doesn't really serve you if you're spending the savings on transportation and now spending more time in your car and less time with your family. So I hope I addressed all those points and good morning, everyone.
Thank you. I'm going to restate the question because I know it was a long question and restate it for the next candidate. What should the city be doing to ensure that sufficient affordable housing exists along with the transportation infrastructure to accommodate those residents? And what regulations of new hotels and converting homes to Airbnb's should be part of this? And I'll address it next to Sandra Kilgore. You're muted. It went back to muted again.
Okay. Good. Hi. Okay, yes. I'm definitely an advocate for affordable homes. We really need to really work on the whole issue. Pretty much Kim and Sage addressed a lot of the programs that are in place right now to increase affordable homes. But the one thing I'm concerned about is the pricing for affordable homes. It looks like unfortunately for me, I think that we basically have to keep the affordable homes in the price range of, like I said, anywhere from 90,000 to 120,000 for the people that actually need it to be able to benefit from it. These are people that are on the lower income, minimum wages and things like that. So it's okay to say we're going to put these affordable homes in place, but we need to get a price point. And that's what council really needs to work out because basically you have different housing levels. You have basically public housing, and then you have regular housing. And the people in between, these are the retirees, the young families with small kids and people on minimum wage. Basically, we have to make sure that the affordable housing is priced in a range that they can afford. That to me is a big issue. One of the other things we have to, you talked about the infrastructure. Of course, we need to actually change zoning and basically increase the density within the city. And basically, especially those that are close to transportation corridors, so people can get to work without having cars. So that's very important. Another issue that's very important that I think is happening right now is we had a lot of small builders here in Asheville. And unfortunately, because of our growth, the small builders are not able to keep up with the type of homes, I mean, the amount of homes that's needed. We have Catalyst Capital, who's coming in and putting over 1,000 homes here in West Asheville. They just got a conditional zoning, should be able to put that in. And then we have another development, a new development with about 850 homes coming in. Now, with those two developments, you're looking at over 2,000 homes. So basically, anytime you increase inventory, then it actually makes homes more affordable. So I'm hoping that that actually helps too with the market.
Thank you. We'll next go to Keith Young.
Thank you. I'll try to be as concise as possible. How do we ensure affordable housing? I think we've got some, some things that are going on right now with the city that are, that are moving us forward. Probably not at the pace that a lot of folks would like, but it's definitely moving us forward. We can continue using our Louiezi program, land use incentive grants, making loans throughout our housing trust fund, making sure that policy is ensured that whenever the city gives money to a developer to build affordable housing for multiple units that somewhere in that housing choice vouchers are utilized. I think being able to allow individuals to split lots or build on smaller lots will help also bring that cost down. I think we have a good opportunity with the land trust that we have right now to make sure that we continue to try to help fund that in some way, shape, or form. The city is also adding to its inventory of land for affordable housing. And one thing that I will talk about that I've been a proponent of in the past is developers who come to the city who want to build affordable housing usually have, the most common problem that I see is they can't find financing for the project. And so I'm an advocate for the city becoming its own developer, whether it be financing these projects or going out and just building it ourselves sometimes, probably more along the lines of financing. And the way that we can do that is through lobs and sobs, long-term obligation bonds and short-term obligation bonds. We could usually take about, say, $100,000 and leverage that for a million. So you can do the math if you want to go up from that. The one of the largest projects that I've talked to a developer about that they built for affordable housing was about $13 million. And they struggled to find that funding, whereas the city could utilize our bond rating and our credit to be able to get a lob or a sob to finance these sorts of developments in a way that bring the cost down. So those are some basic ways, I think, making sure that all developments are on bus routes, making sure that, you know, there's, there's, there's ample transportation from the transit system going to and from these developments, especially ones that run on a more frequent time. As far as short-term rentals, I support home stays. I think people should be able to utilize their homes to help, to help pay for their homes or supplement their income. And so I'm a, I'm an advocate for that as well.
Thank you. Rich Lee.
Thank you, Frank, for the question. And I appreciate that it folds a lot of different topics in because I think it emphasizes something that's not always touched on, which is that these are all interconnected problems in a lot of ways. Asheville, a city with a population of about 90,000 people, bears the traffic and the infrastructure demands of an additional 70,000 to 80,000 people every day. About half of those are commuters from outside city limits and about half are tourists. So that means when you're sitting in traffic in I-26 or on Patton Avenue or Tunnel Road, a lot of the people in front of them behind you aren't local residents, but we pay for the infrastructure that they use. And we, we have to live here. We bear the brunt of it. That's why as Chair of the City's Multimodal Transportation Commission over the last four years, I actually spent a lot of time talking about land use and development patterns. We've been in the process of passing a zoning change, I believe Sage and Kim mentioned it, that'll help create more affordable housing on hotspot properties where the infrastructure can handle it. But we need a more comprehensive zoning reform. Asheville zoning is 23 years old. It was written for a different time and a much smaller, much different city. And that's contributing to a lot of our problems, including problems of where hotels are located and what hospitality uses are allowed in neighborhoods. Let's also remember that the last recession we were in, 2008 and nine, was the tipping point for zoning changes that really created the explosion of downtown hotels and a lot of the problems we face now. So in the face of this recession, we need to hold the line in the city that we want to be in the future. It's a big problem. It's one that needs to be focused on equity and building the wealth of Asheville's current residents, especially families from historically disinvested neighborhoods. And we need to focus on the other side of the affordability equation too, which is job growth, creating and giving people access to high-wage career-track jobs, including remote jobs that are actually based elsewhere in the country. So more people can keep up with our cost of living, which is continuing to rise. Again, this is a big interconnected problem. It's one that's long overdue for a comprehensive reform. And it's one that I look forward to taking a leadership role on if I'm elected to City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And up next, we have just a short series of yes or no questions on this topic of traffic and affordable housing. And we'd like to ask that you limit your answer to a simple yes or no. If a few seconds of clarification are needed, we will let you know when your time is up. So the first question is, do you support expanded mass transit in Asheville? And we'll follow the same order, asking that question first to Kim Roney.
Yes.
Thank you, Kim. Sage Turner.
I love it. Yes, with Kim.
Sandra Kilgore.
Yes.
Keith Young.
Yes, of course.
And Rich Lee.
Yes, and especially into the county.
Great. Well, nobody disagreed on that one. Next question, do you support continuation of the I-26 connector? And we'll go, we'll start with Sage this time and go through.
I support it in the ways that we need to get it done. I hate the ways it's dismantling parts of our neighborhoods. And I'm disappointed in the, the overpass and the accessibility, the multimodal infrastructure. So there's a committee that's working on aesthetics, and I don't think they're being heard.
Okay. Sandra.
Unfortunately, there are some issues that could be handled better, but I have to support it because it's necessary. So.
Keith?
We still on yes or no questions?
Yes, this is on the, do you support the continuation of the I-26 connector?
Yes.
Very good. And Rich?
Yes.
All right. And Sage? Oh, I'm sorry. We asked, Kim, I'm sorry.
No, not as is currently proposed. We are in the design process, transportation. This is a example of infrastructural racism, and we need to defend our neighborhoods.
All right. Another question, should the aging Bowen Bridge be replaced sooner than the state currently plans? And we'll start this question with Sandra.
No.
Very good. Keith Young?
No.
Rich?
No, but it should be converted to a local street and connected to Hillcrest, as the designs currently show.
Kim Roney?
No, on timing. Agree with Rich on the plans.
And Sage Turner?
No, for financial reasons and agree that better connections would be a good way to go and multimodal.
Very good. Thank you all for that quick round. We'll go back now to our next topic, which is social justice and police reform. And you have obviously the long answers or short answers. The Asheville Police Department has had, let's say, a checkered history, including controversial racial incidences and clashes with protesters. The department has also had trouble finding and keeping an effective leader. And I'm wondering, what should the council do to improve that situation? We'll start that question to Sage Turner.
And the question is, what should councils do to retain a chief?
To improve the situation of this.
Of overall public safety.
Yeah.
You know, I think it's a broader topic. It's not, there's no simple answer there. So we're seeing this not just in Asheville, but across the nation and that we need reform to public, public safety in general and policing is part of that. But when I think of public safety, I think about how we take care of our community. And police have ended up in this position where we look to them for every solution. And I don't think that that is fair to them or fair to our citizens that are being impacted by police, particularly some that are disproportionately and negatively impacted by policing. So here in Asheville, we have, we've seen the resignation of about 30 officers. We've rehired about a dozen. We're looking at redistricting and really de-districting and going back to what we had before the 2017 change. I think we're going to have to come together and take our time and unpack what it is about policing that has disproportionately affected some members of the community and what it is that we truly feel we need as residents to feel safe and to really lift people up and move them forward. So you know, we've talked about this a bunch as candidates, but when we see folks that need addiction services, we need to not send police. We can send folks with addiction expertise. When we're dealing with houselessness and homelessness issues and potentially a mental health crisis, then we need to be able to send folks that can care for people and help them get the services they need. And that often does not need to be a police officer or an armed person or in a full vehicle. And I think there's some cost saving there, but also some beneficial programming to help individuals. As for retaining a chief, I think there's, it's similar to what we're experiencing as a city and a nation. There's a culture shift happening. And we need to understand that that may take several rounds of leaders. It may take several rounds of officers leaving and new ones joining. It may take different types of training. It actually may take investing in new sources of training to get to the state where officers are being paid well enough and given the training enough to care better for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Now to Sandra Kilgore.
Okay, as far as the police reform, I basically think that we definitely need to vet our policemen better. We need to screen them better. I think that's going to be the first thing we need to do. Because we have, just like any police department, they have bad apples and we have bad apples too. So we need to basically, if we can rid ourselves of the bad apples, and then we get in a training program that basically helps the policeman actually work better in the community. I think that would be one of the first steps that we could do. As far as the police captain or replacing, I think that we have to understand that, like Sage said, this is a national problem as far as what's going on in the police department or whatever. I think we need to actually give, give them a chance. You know, I think what happens, what we sometimes do is throw the baby out with the bathwater. I had the opportunity to meet with Chief Zach, and I think he has a lot of wonderful programs that he's putting in place to help with black-on-black crime and basically just do a lot of things to help the community. So I'm thinking that as far as we, where we are now with that, I would like to see us actually support him and keep him in place. He's open to the community. He's interested in meeting. So that's important. As far as the Rachel, I mean, I think it's social injustice that we've been experiencing. I look at it like this. This is something we've been struggling with for hundreds of years. You know, all base, all we're looking for is equal rights up under the law, you know, rights that were granted to us in the Constitution. And that pretty much, you know, we just want equal rights, equal healthcare, equal education, equal opportunity, economic opportunity. That's what the movement is about. And I really think that that's what we really need. Now that it's been brought to the forefront, then I think that people are having that conversation that can actually improve our whole community.
Thank you, Sandra. I'm just restating of the question, considering this sort of checkered history of racial incidences, clashes with protesters, and trouble finding and keeping an effective leader. What should the council do to improve the situation? Keith?
Thank you. I think when we're talking about the situation with police, I think we always, I always feel like I have to bring the conversation back for folks to be acutely aware of why we're in this moment. And in this moment, we've have, we've got a lot of issues to deal with that affect, you know, all of our citizens. Moreover, but black people in this country are basically dealing with issues that are systemic in nature. I've said this before, the same systemics that allow Confederate statues to go up in disparities and policing to continue are the very same systemics that continue to recycle itself generation after generation, leaving us as black Americans with disparities in so many areas. And so this isn't just a city of Asheville issue. There are basically municipalities and diverse communities around this country that have to wrestle with this through a larger context within American history. And what has happened throughout that history is what brings us to this very point in time. And so action does need to occur. How does that action need to occur? I think, you know, there, there are a lot of areas that you can focus on and a lot of people in the communities, there is no lack of solutions coming to the table, whereas, for instance, police shouldn't be dealing in certain situations, as mentioned before by members who are running for council and council members as well. If there's a situation where you don't need to call a police officer, then we should find someone else to be able to do that job. I think we have to look at the structure of how we're doing this. If we're going to be pulling pulling things away from the police department that they won't be doing, how are we setting up the infrastructure so that it won't be, there won't be any lack of service? I think there's some cultural issues too that go along with this. I've had many conversations with individuals within the city on a high level that have given me anecdotal stories that I can't claim as fact, but I'll share them here with you that, you know, in some of our areas of our policing, specifically within public housing, I've heard stories of officers being literally scared to get out of their car and police. And if you're going to be scared to get out of your car to police, that's going to affect how we do community policing. I'm not saying all officers are like that, but the fact that those stories have risen to the occasion have come to my attention from individuals that, that are very high up in the city. It's one of those, we have a lot of things that we need to deal with. We, we need to deal with the recruitment and retention of minority and black officers. We need to deal with what sort of culture is being promoted inside the police department. I've talked with Chief Zach about that, and he's expressed to me on different levels of what he's trying to do, and I support that. We've got a long way to go. There, there are folks asking for us to continue to look at the budget of the police department, which I'm definitely open to. I've, I think for the most part, you know, I am affected as a black man on how police police me. So with all these different disparities, I think the overall, how do you judge what success is in these situations? It's going to be, are the disparities dropping? And is the community welcoming, open to the way that police is policing is going to change and is changing? Says I'm out of time. I could go on.
Thank you, Keith. Rich Lee.
Thanks for this question again. I think there's a real will in our community to see our efforts move towards a different model of public safety than just enforcement only. One conversation I had recently with a community member who works in public health has really struck with me. This person suggested that perhaps as much as half of the crime in the city, or half as much, as much as half of police activity centers around just a few hundred houseless and low-income people, around people struggling with addiction or mental health illnesses, illnesses and chronic problems of poverty and an addiction in many, but not all cases. And so this person suggested that the costs of housing and, and connecting people with treatment and jobs and, and other resources could actually, like fiscally, in terms of the city budget, be lower than what we spend repeatedly arresting and citing and trying and jailing people. And so as we've seen over these, these high-profile killings like, like Breonna Taylor and George Floyd, any approach that is armed and enforcement-focused also carries much, much, much greater risks of escalation and violence. And the burdens of that are falling inequitably on our society, on our non-white neighbors, on our poorest neighbors. So my question is, are we missing out on cost savings that, that could actually have us doing things better? And I think we can. And doing that could actually free up police resources that were never meant to be for the city's social work. So I don't know exactly what that looks like. It could look like Eugene Oregon's Kahoots Program or Denver Star Program or something that doesn't operate under the umbrella of Asheville Police or something totally different that we invent. But I think Asheville is the place and, and now is the time. And we have to consider this the time that the cost of the status quo has become too great a burden for too many people to bear. So call it our moonshot, call it our Manhattan Project. We have a will to do it. We see. We see that through the protests of this summer and the mass peaceful and civic action. We have the brains and hearts for it. We're not gonna walk ourselves off a cliff. We're not gonna put more people at risk in this community than are right now, but we owe ourselves to try. And the commitment I'm making to you right now, listening to this and participating in this is to take care of all our community members, all of them, and to be your partner in this work. Thank you for this question.
Yeah, thank you, Rich. Kim Roney.
Okay. I have to start with the conversation about reforms. City Hall has been dragging feet on the really basic reforms that were requested because this conversation isn't new. It's not a new conversation in our country, but it's not unfamiliar to Asheville. After the fatal shooting of Jerry Jai Williams, after his interaction with the Asheville Police Department in 2017, many neighbors started gathering together under the umbrella of million dollars for the people and asking us for to divest from policing so we could invest in the people and in community. And so what we see today is that we need to reimagine public safety. Policing in its very nature is violent. It's reflective of our violent relationship with each other and the planet where we treat people and our natural resources as disposable. Policing is used by design to uphold white supremacy and for violence against black, brown and indigenous people. So I wanna see us get in right relationship with each other. I think we're gonna have to come together with a strategic plan that's at least as broad and deep as the noise ordinance, community engagement output that we saw so that we can reimagine public safety and then end policing as we know it. What we need our city council to do is their job, which is budget, planning and policy. For budget, I stand in solidarity with intergenerational black leaders and black ABL demands and the Racial Justice Coalition, asking for us to divest from 50% of the Asheville Police Department so that we can invest in long-term safety strategies. We did talk about leadership, okay? So leadership in the police department. We have been cycling through so many police chiefs and when I look at what the city council can actually do about it, we need to demand equitable outcomes from our budget plans and policies. But the city council instructs the top-level staff, not the police chief, but the city manager. So we need more and regular updates from how those outcomes are coming out of the office. When I look at, it's not fun to do corporate-level staff reviews, but it's a chance to talk about what's being done well, what isn't getting done? And is it because you weren't given the authority, the resources, or you just aren't gonna do it? So if we aren't gonna get to equitable outcomes in our public safety, then we definitely need to see a change. And I think that's what we're talking about now. Also, because of our reparations resolution, the eyes of the country are on us to see what Asheville is gonna do. And when I see our first equity and inclusion officer, Kimberly Archie, leaving and running into that resistance, I'm deeply saddened because I know that we're taking a step back instead of a step forward and we need each other. If we're going to reimagine public safety, let's start having a conversation with our neighbors, with our family, with the people we work with. What is keeping us safe? What is not keeping everybody safe? What makes us feel unsafe? Access to housing, access to food. Some of this work is already being done. When we look at what's happening with the RHA Mobile Crisis Response Unit, we may not have to start from scratch and go like, what is Eugene Oregon doing with cahoots? If the work is already being done here and it needs to be amplified. We can support the Be Love Street Medics team. We can support the Steady Collective Needle Exchange. We can support diversion programs, reentry programs, mentorship. That's what it means for, when I see the community saying, we need to divest so that we can invest because the community is already building these amazing solutions and they just need more resources. We have very resourceful people. I wanna see us get in right relationship with each other and I'm committed to faithfulness in the work for the people and the planet so we can do the healing, so we can address the harm that's been done.
Thank you, everyone, for those answers. Now we're gonna go through our yes or no questions and the first one is something that several of you have addressed, but I wanna just put it as a yes or no question. So do you support a reallocation of funds in the Asheville Police Department to additional community and social services? And we'll start with Sage on that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Thank you all. Would you support returning to a greater police presence in city-owned public housing to cut down on criminal activity, especially those who are not residents and are already on the banned list? Sage?
Is I don't know an option? I'm not sure. I would need to hear more about this issue. I am, I'm hesitant to say because I know that there are, there are overpolicing and there are also community members feeling underpoliced and needing help.
All right. Thank you. Sandra?
I would say no.
Keith?
No. Safety doesn't always mean more police.
Rich?
Wonderful. So I think that, you know, so I would say, I'd say no, but that decision needs to come, that request needs to come from the housing residents themselves, either way.
And Kim?
No, I wanna see what solutions are coming from the community that aren't police.
All right. Thank you, guys. I think we're out of time for yes or no questions on that group, so we're gonna move on to our next topic, which is COVID and the economy. Understanding that the city contributed to the One Buncombe Fund, are there additional steps within the city's power to revive the economy while also continuing to protect against the spread of COVID-19? And we'll start with Sandra on this question.
First of all, I think that the city council should take this COVID issue very seriously. That should be on the forefront. So I basically think that money's at the city council, as far as city council's budget, I think that they pretty much have money that's in, in reserve for emergency situations. And I think that money needs to stay there for dealing with COVID testing, contact tracing and things of that nature. We have to put that in, put it in effect as soon as possible to ensure that it doesn't, the COVID virus does not spike, especially at this particular time where people are beginning to go inside and things like that. And also we've got a whole, a large influx of people that are moving here and that is another reason why council has to really take this seriously as far as the contact tracing and testing because we can't afford for our community to start spiking, especially in light of all the things that are going on now. So, and what was the other part of the question? I'm sort of...
Doing this while we're, while we're protecting against the spread of COVID, but we're also safeguarding the economy.
Okay. And basically, this is the way I look at it. If we get the virus under control, then the economy will take care of itself because basically that is what it is. The economy is only a symptom of the virus. The virus is the root. The sooner we can sort of control the virus and get everything intact, then people will feel safe, people will come out and people will do the things they've been doing before and the economy will revive. So that's where I think the best way to deal with that.
Thank you. Okay. Keith?
All right. I think probably on the most basic level, what we need to do, well, one, we've already contributed to the One Buncombe Fund. But, and that can, that can possibly be elevated to a more long-term standing fund to help small businesses out. And I'll, I'll talk about the small businesses part first. It takes a lot of work to open up a new small business and during COVID-19, if a business declares bankruptcy or shuts down, that whole process has to begin pretty much anew. And it leaves businesses to wonder whether or not they want to really invest during this time. Another side of that is the loss of human capital, people who lose their jobs during this time period, who have to be paired with new businesses coming out. So one thing that we can do to help revive the economy is support programs like the Inclusive Hiring Partners that I've helped work with at the Chamber. Basically, it's three-part process of mentoring, skills training and employment. The mentorship part partners basically different organizations such as Community Action, Housing, Authority of Asheville, On Track, the Spark Foundation. Basically, they'll help participants navigate challenges of re-entering the community, whether it be from incarceration or addressing barriers like housing, transportation, childcare, substance abuse, all these different things, and give them peer support as well as skills training through partners such as AB Tech, Mountain Area Workforce Development, Upskill. They'll connect these participants with training for high-end jobs that's in construction and manufacturing, things that haven't necessarily dwindled during this time period. And then the employment part is basically they will match participates, excuse me, participants with onsite work experience and give them onsite work experience and pair them with the job. That's one part. I think also, one of the most, which I was gonna start saying, was the most basic thing that we can do is protect our residents. We've, we've, we've partnered with Pisgah Legal where we, we, we help with the, the evictions, not getting people evicted. We wanna save people in their homes and save renters because right now, the bottom line in people's pockets, it's nearly nonexistent. So people need a lot of help when it comes to trying to stay in their homes. We've gotta protect those folks. It, it's, it's gonna be imperative to moving forward. And so those are some of the basic things that we can do. We've got some funding coming from the federal government to help during these COVID times, but that's not guaranteed depending on how this election turns out. And I don't think the federal government's doing a pretty good job right now at all with pretty much anything COVID-related. So we've got our hands full, but I think we're moving in a, in a positive direction. We're moving in a positive direction and I think we'll be able to weather the storm. I talked about this last night. We had a projected fund balance that was possibly gonna be lower than what we expected. It's gonna be between seventeen and eighteen percent, which is gonna put us in a good place to be able to balance our budget, which we have to do anyway, and possibly be able to look at other sorts of expenditures or creative ways to help small businesses and help the people that are actually hurting the most during this timeframe.
Thank you, Keith. Rich?
Thank you. As Sandra said, you know, we have to control the virus and so we can safely end the shutdown and send our kids back to school. My wife and I have four kids at home and though we're fortunate to have jobs that we can work remotely, it's a burden on our work and I can't imagine how so many thousands of other families can manage. But we owe it to our community. We're not getting leadership from above on reducing the spread and keeping things safe. So it has to come from us. We're on an island here. We are the cavalry. And the same goes for dealing with the economic impacts too. We're losing local independent businesses, restaurants, retail, artists and services that are really irreplaceable. And, you know, the president says, it's okay. A restaurant closes, another one opens up, everything goes on like normal. Some of our local leaders say that too, but that's not the case. It's not necessarily the case with our ecosystem. Maybe a restaurant opens or a restaurant closes due to the shutdown and a chain takes its place. And now it's got national suppliers that cut out local farms and local distributors and companies. We have to triage. We have to keep who we have here and help everybody ride out the economic impacts safely or they're gone and they're taking our jobs and our culture and the life that we've come to love here with them. So I'm supporter of local action, not relying on the state or the feds to bring stimulus in too late and not relying on an approach, a statewide approach that's about keeping Olive Gardens open. I'm talking about making sure that what we have right now, the culture that we built in the city, is able to stay in place. And that means preventing, using city funds and city loan guarantees and down payment assistance and rent support to help keep people from being evicted when the eviction ban expires. That means as we build out of this, making sure that our zoning reflects the city that we want to recover into. And that means that, that means making sure that, that means, it means an approach that actually cares about the people that are here and the businesses that are here, not just the doors that are open and the property tax bills that are paid. And so I, I don't want us to lose sight of that. I said this before in our first question, I'll say it again, that when downtown shut down in the housing bubble burst of two thousand eight and nine, vested interests took that as an opportunity to push through zoning that allowed basically every, all the hotel construction that's become, that allowed our, the, the balance of our economy to shift more to tourism than it already was. And we can't be prey to those arguments now that we need to take the easy way, open up more tourism, more hotels, more inefficient uses of our lives and land than we have. We have to keep sight of that. Thank you.
Okay. And I'll restate the question for Kim. Understanding that the city contributed to the One Buncombe Fund, are there additional steps within the city's power to revive the economy while also continuing to protect against the spread of COVID-19?
No, I think in this moment, it's important for us to lift up our youth that are calling for a Green New Deal. And what that means for us to heal the people and the planet and address good-paying jobs. Why we need a just transition through this COVID-19 pandemic is because so many people are vulnerable when we keep doing things the same way. So what I don't wanna see us do is to get back to normal because normal wasn't working. First, we have some personal responsibilities. I wanna take a moment to remind everyone to wash your hands, wear your masks and stay six feet away and social distance. This is one of the things that we can do to take better care of each other because the government can't do any, everything. We need oversight of our finances. So whether it is the One Buncombe Fund that needs equity audit to see if it was perpetuating existing inequities or if it was actually working to lift up our most vulnerable folks, we will need to see more of that recovery coming again. We will need to see oversight of federal and state funds, which is one of the reasons I'm concerned that the city's finance committee hasn't met regularly since February. We have a lot of not only regular city funds, but also emergency funds that need to be addressed and the bonds. And I do agree that we as a city can do some work with eviction protections to make sure that the people that are most impacted and most vulnerable aren't pushed out because we already knew we were the second fastest gentrifying city in the country according to Realtor.com. So let's look at emergency funds for evictions for renters, homeowners and small local businesses. But we also have to think about what comes after this. Right now, we have a tremendous opportunity gap in our schools, especially making our black students vulnerable. We need to diversify our economy and we're not gonna be able to do that and attract living wage jobs or amplify current living wage jobs when we have this opportunity gap in our schools. So we need to work together around that. And we also need to diversify our economy by realizing that we're becoming Hotel City, USA. So at 2:30 this afternoon, council will be having a budget work session about what comes after the hotel moratorium. And I for one am of the opinion that we can't change the rules and allow more hotels because no amount of community benefit is going to work until we leverage it to get more of our hotel occupancy taxes to work for the people who live and work here. So I feel like this is a good example to see if Asheville is gonna really care about each other and really work together for a just transition through the COVID-19 pandemic because we have a lot of work together thinking about our whole ecosystem of our schools, our planet, our people, where we live and work, and what's gonna happen when more people come here. I want them to come here with the understanding that we care about each other and we have really high standards of what that means.
Thank you. Sage?
I'll echo a lot of what has been said. It is imperative that we first stay safe. I've also been saying, let's take care of each other, stay safe and stay in business. So the city has taken some initial steps that I found were quite positive with the public space management. The seventy-eight businesses are currently using some kind of outdoor dining, curbside pickup or special service sidewalk or parking spots, et cetera. And I think we have to be adaptable in that way and continue to adapt as the winter comes and the outdoor dining may shrink and the cold and flu season may increase and we may see another hard hit to our businesses. I agree with Rich that we need to keep everyone in business that we can because there is always the risk of others coming in and taking advantage of the situation. I know that it's happening already. We did receive, this is quite an interesting thing, so the One Buncombe raised 1.4 million dollars, I believe, helped about 500 people stay in their homes with rental assistance. The federal government gave, North Carolina, which then gave Buncombe County and the City of Asheville, 615,000 dollars, of which we gave 200,000 to rental assistance and 200,000 to homelessness prevention. So our local efforts actually outpaced in funding and aid what the federal package brought to Asheville, which I thought was astounding and something that we could do again. I think, you know, recently the city found that sales tax projections to the COVID losses were not as bad as they thought. So we do have some funding that we have many needs, but could be thrown into this arena. I think the One Buncombe could rebound and raise more money. I also think the time for putting pressure on the CBB and CDA is appropriate. So we know that since March, since COVID hit, we've advertised for five days and yet we have seen a surge in occupancy levels, almost that of what we had before COVID hit. We're hitting about seventy-three percent on weekends and about sixty percent on weekdays. So the taxes coming in, the taxes are not going out and the money's sitting there. And we, I believe, need to make the argument that more money should be invested. There was an initial five million dollar distribution that helped a ton of local businesses. five million dollar distribution that helped a ton of local businesses. Let's do it again. Let's get the legislation changed if needed. Let's work together because locally we are doing more than the federal government is providing for us. Uh, we do know that the Buncombe County and potentially the city has more CARES Act funds, money coming. So advocacy at this level, whether it's council candidates or communities and residents need to happen to make sure that the money that does come through Asheville goes to those that are hardest hit. I would say, um, I think that's probably it. I do want to acknowledge though that we have had over thirty-five hundred cases of COVID and that we are seeing another spike. We have lost ninety-three community members to COVID. And if we're not careful and we don't approach winter and the oncoming, what is, I would say, our peak travel season and cold and flu season. If we are not doing everything we can right now, then we are going to see additional loss of lives. So it's all hands on deck to stay home, stay safe and stay in business.
Thank you all for those answers. Um, and we're gonna skip in the interest of time, uh, yes, no round, uh, in this area. But obviously it's a very important topic for a lot of our residents. We're gonna move now on to our fourth topic. And before we do, I just wanna let listeners know if you're tuned in that you're listening to Asheville FM at WSFM LP one oh three point three Asheville. And this is the, uh, Asheville City Council Candidate Forum hosted by Carolina Public Press and one oh three point three Asheville FM. The next question is, uh, what role should, we're, we're moving into the topic of healthcare and mission hospital changes that we've seen in recent years. And I'm wondering what role should the city play in ongoing transition of mission health to a private ownership under HCA? And given concerns about access to care, quality of care, treatment of employees and compliance with the Attorney General stipulations for approval of the mission HCA deal. Keith, we'll start with you.
All right. Um, because it's a private entity, I'm not necessarily sure what specific role the city can take in effectively changing outcomes there, other than what some council members, I believe most council members, if not all, did, which was support, um, one, you know, the nurses unionizing and voicing our opinion, um, about the conditions of the hospital. Other than that, I'm, I'm being very concise. I'm not gonna try to blow smoke up anybody's you-know-what. In my mind, I, I can't see, you know, where we can effectively be able to change what's going on with that, with that entity, other than a strong voice of our opinion. I don't pretend to know everything about everything. Uh, there may be some better answers coming from this, this group, which is why these folks, including myself, are all running for city council. But voicing our strong opposition to certain conditions in the hospital and how they treat their workers and how, uh, patient care is being conducted is something that, you know, we can voice our opinion on, uh, along with county, if that so happens to be the case. And what we've already done as individual council members, um, which I've done, which is give my full throated support for the nurses, uh, unionizing, which was a great, uh, a great accomplishment for them. And hopefully will help change, uh, some of the culture in, in the new, uh, in the new mission hospital.
Thank you, Keith. Uh, Rich Lee?
So to, um, to echo Keith, you know, Asheville needs to highlight and support the unionization of mission nurses. Their fight is not over and their, their danger of, um, suffering retaliation is not over. But there's the promise there for them to build collective bargaining power, just like, um, collectives in any, um, industry that can help force through those changes that are going to benefit all of us here in Asheville. I think beyond that, we need to be the people's megaphone to the governor's and attorney general's office. When the public suffers, they, they don't usually pick up the phone and call AG Josh Stein. They turn to their local leaders and they say, how, how do you help us out? And as somebody who has been involved in city issues for years, both on both sides of DeSis here, it's in city hall. I, I hate the answer that we can't do anything or this is out of our wheelhouse. We need, people are gonna come to us and say, what do we do about the care that my, that my mom or that my wife or the, that I or my kids or I received at a mission system, um, facility? And we have to be able to say, we will, we will carry your concerns to the state. We will carry your concerns to, to the feds. To that end, you know, um, I, I share a party affiliation with, um, both Governor Cooper and AG Stein. I don't know them well, but you know, I, I'm hoping that if elected, I can leverage those connections into more attention onto Western North Carolina. And I have close relationships and working relationships with all of our local legislative delegation in Raleigh, whom I hope is going to be our majority member legislative delegation here. So the people with power are, um, for the most, over, um, mission health are first and foremost are, are nurses and our mission workers. They're secondly, our officials in Raleigh and we need to be a city, a city leaders and county leaders, the conduit for public concerns there. And I think at the, the end, just to throw one last thing in, mission, because of the way it was allowed to, um, to grow and took over many small practices, um, mission is close to becoming a monopoly operation in Western North Carolina. And, um, to whatever extent the city can support, um, competing operations, competing facilities, that is an area that the city could, could make sure that there's competition in that field, both to, um, give people alternatives and to, um, leverage into changes at mission health. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. And to Kim Roney?
Sure. Um, I think one of the things that city council can actually do around the sale of Mission Hospital is ensure that the additional property taxes that we, um, gain from the sale are not just absorbed into the general fund budget, but go to issues that address the social determinants of health. There was a lot of work done around family-friendly affordable Buncombe. Um, that request is still being heard, at least by me. So what we can't do, um, which has been addressed, is, um, legislative changes. But we can, this is one of those situations where every time the city says, we can't do this, this is a state issue. We need to be building coalition across the state, whether it's health and human rights, fighting against House Bill two or House Bill one forty-two, or situations like this. The best thing that I've been able to come up with research is that we need to build coalition and request from the Attorney General Stein, implementation of patient satisfaction surveys that they be tied to rates with scores. Um, and ultimately we need to be leveraging our voices, um, here in Western North Carolina with our legislature to expand Medicaid, um, as we work towards a national expansion of Medicare for all. So I think one of the jobs that we can expect to come from our council members, which, you know, I'm running to be one, is that we will fight for the people of Asheville in Raleigh and that we won't take note for an answer because the, the needs that we have in our community are shared needs across the state. Asheville is the ninth fastest growing city in the state. My understanding last numbers came in that Wilmington was the first. So surely they're having some of the same issues that we are. And we can start to share in the work more productively and more publicly.
Great. Thank you, uh, Kim. I'm gonna restate the question now. Uh, what role should the city play in the ongoing transition of mission health to the private, private ownership of HCA, given those concerns about access to care, quality of care, treatment of its employees and compliance with the Attorney General stipulation? Sage Turner, you're next.
Thank you. Uh, I'll echo some of what Sin said. You know, I think, uh, for any change in the community, whether it's city councillors or residents, we have really two routes. Advocacy and awareness or systems and policies. So when we, when HCA purchased Mission, a one point five billion dollar fund was created, the Dogwood Health Trust Fund, and we started receiving property taxes from what was the largest non-paying, um, piece of land and property in the city at that time. So two things come to mind. Um, I agree with Kim that we need to be very strategic in how those property taxes are utilized and not just generally absorbed into the general fund, that we know exactly where those new monies are going and that they have intentions similar to the Dogwood Health Trust Fund, which is supposed to, uh, expand healthcare and resources to the community and in Western North Carolina. So we do know that our population is going to grow in the next two, um, the next two largest growth areas are older, um, seventy-five and older. So we know that we're going to need additional healthcare. So now that we have a hospital that's been privatized and paying property taxes, let's let it grow and let those property taxes grow as well. HCA has a history of fighting the value of its properties to reduce its cost of, um, property taxation. And I would suggest that we fight that every chance we get and, uh, continue to, uh, revalue them as much as we do our residents and make sure that they're paying adequate property taxes as well. We do need to, we had some turnover with the HCA recently and I agree with Keith that there's not a lot we can do with a private organization, but we can advocate and kind of clear the muddy waters. We need to understand why the CEO suddenly left. We need to understand, um, what the fund is doing and what it's not doing and why it's had to change. So more transparency. So I think city council could be requesting updates and regular, um, action and correction and, you know, what is working, what's not, what are the outcomes and what can we pivot? And advocating on that level. Um, I also think, you know, the citizens have a voice now. And I want to shout out to Will Overfelt, who is just a resident who experienced poor healthcare at Mission Hospital and started a movement by sharing his story, which is now the Mission Maladies and helped the unionization of the four nurses. So congratulations to the nurses. I've been working with unions for a long time. I totally support the movement. And I think the nurses will help flag and alarm us when there's patient care and needs that need to happen. And we'll, we can look to them for support in ways that we can support them as well. I think that is all I can say about that. It's a complicated and great question. Thank you.
Thank you, Sage. And, uh, final, uh, response on this from Sandra Kilbrough.
And thank you for asking that question. That's a great question. And the reason why is this, uh, basically, like, like Keith would said earlier, it's a private industry, so we can only do bit so much. But what we can do is we can actually start sort of, um, okay, let's say it like this. H, HCA is a for-profit organization. And basically what their concerns are, are not really concerns of giving the best healthcare. The concerns are basically making money. So basically the thing is, how do you hurt a company that's basically for profit? And that is their interest. I think we could do more at city council and holding them accountable by, sort of having that conversation with the community and like, uh, doing surveys and, and things like that to make the community aware of the services and how they've actually, uh, uh, slipping as far as, uh, as giving good care. And I think those things need to be brought on the forefront. And what has happened too, is with the union, um, hopefully being able to come in, if they're able to negotiate a decent contract, then that will definitely help. It will not only help the nurses, but it will also help the people in the community. Because the union will hold them accountable for a certain amount of services and making sure they have the right kind of, uh, materials and things like that are, uh, that they need to do a, uh, efficient job. And what has happened too is like, a lot of the people that I've spoken to that's recently visited, uh, Mission Hospital as patients, they said that the service is horrendous, uh, the cleanliness, uh, they understaffed and things like that. That affects everyone in the community. Those things need to be brought to the forefront. And I, and the more that we bring that to the forefront, then it will force, um, HCA to come to the table because we have to hit them where it hurts. As far as the, let's see. Okay. And that's one way I think that we can actually, uh, do things to, uh, improve the healthcare system.
Thank you, Sandra. Okay. Next up, we're going to, uh, more general questions and some of these are coming from our audience. The first question relates to Asheville City Schools. The Asheville City School Board is appointed by council members and not directly accountable to the voters. The city schools have one of the highest disparities in racial academic achievement in the country. They have a spotty record on transparency and they've repeatedly had replaced super tenets at taxpayer expense. Would you support moving to a board the voters can elect? Or do you think voters should blame council members for the shortcomings of the school board? And I'll start, uh, with Rich on this very pointed question.
Thanks. I have a feeling I know who sent that one in. Um, but I know it's one, um, a question that I've heard from, um, lots of parts of our community. Look, um, electing a school board is, is not a panacea. And all, all you have to do is look, um, just outside city limits or even inside city limits at Buncombe County Schools and the county school board and the struggles they've gone through over the last few months and weeks with, um, decisions about returning to school and with politics entering into what ought to, you know, reasonably be politic free decisions to see how an elected school board could go bad. However, uh, after years of this and after watching, um, my kids who are in second, third, fourth and fourth grade, I've come around to the decision that, um, putting the school board up to elections is an accountability measure that, um, whose time has come. It's time to give it a shot. I don't think it's a panacea. But I, I, what I see now operating is a, um, a school administration that is out of step with the, um, experiences and needs of, um, Asheville parents and students. And, um, and that, that needs to go. I'll, I'll keep it brief at that because, um, it was a very pointed question, as you said. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
I do support an elected school board. And I think as we look towards the future of what comes for Asheville, there is potential that the districting of the city could come back. I'm glad that it is not districted, that our city council fought it. But if it does come back, we'll have two and a half districts of the city, if they're summarily drawn. That'll be appointing school board members that aren't served by the city schools. So I think we need to look at the future. It's sort of like the electoral college. As long as it's working for you, why change it? But I think right now, while we have power, we can give that power to the people. While we are making those moves towards hearing what community input looks like, looking at the, um, future of the census data and looking at what an elected school board looks like. As a council member, I'm going to be looking for, um, school board members that can acknowledge that the disciplinary gap in our schools and our opportunity gap in our schools is directly related to systemic racism and implicit bias. I'm going to be looking for school board members that understand, um, the punitive nature of school discipline and exclusionary practices. So we have a lot of work ahead of us in closing the opportunity gap. And I agree that it's not going to be a, uh, an easy fix. But our community needs to come together around these issues and we need more accountability, including for our school board to be meeting more regularly with city council.
Thank you. Sage?
Yes. So I do support an elected school board. And I think one of the benefits would be much like this forum we're experiencing right now, where applicants, uh, can be more fully vetted. And, you know, I think council has a lot going on at all times and every issue is important. And I don't think they're able to give this particular issue the attention they need and that the community should be able to weigh in on who is helping hire the superintendent and meet us through these challenging times. So our schools have two problems. We are the highest in the state in both, uh, education gap between black and white children in middle school and also in the school to prison pipeline for our youth. And those are, neither of those, we should be proud of them. We are also highest in the state for capital and funding, so it's not a funding issue. To me, when I look at, um, the schooling situation, I feel like there is more to it than what happens at school. There's only so much you can do with curriculum. We are sending our children to school hungry, um, underslept, whatever it might be, living in conditions that aren't suitable and then sending them home after school, perhaps without internet to do their homework, especially during COVID. Uh, we're, so we have these lifestyle and, um, determinants of health really that are also impacting our children. And I know I don't operate well with a simple cup of coffee, so I can't imagine how we expect our children to do well with, um, other issues going on in their lives. So electing a school board, like Rich said, is not going to be the only fix. We can't just do that and walk away. We do need to return back to what we were doing more of before, which is joint meetings, meetings between city council and school board. We were getting more regular updates and I would like to see that happen. We should know everything that's going on in this issue all the time. We shouldn't have questions about what it means. We should know what's happening. We need regular updates. And I think, you know, I would pose this to everyone on this panel right now. We need city councillors that are accountable. And I'm not hearing from them that they are going to meetings, that they are returning to the community with what's happening. We, we have to hold ourselves accountable in that way.
Sage, we need to move on to the, yeah, thank you. Okay. Uh, and next Sandra on that question.
Okay. And could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. The Asheville City School Board is appointed by council members, not directly accountable to the voters. The city schools have one of the highest disparities in racial academic achievement in the country. They have a spotty record on transparency and they've repeatedly had to replace super tenets at taxpayer expense. Would you support moving to a board the voters can elect? Or do you think the voters should blame council members for the shortcomings of the school board?
No, I'm definitely a proponent of an elected school board. And I think because basically even if you look at council right now, what we have to go through and how we have to be vetted, those things basically are very important. And I think that will actually, uh, as far as the elected school person that they finally choose or whatever, they will be held to a higher standard. You know, by doing it this way. As far as the disparities in the school, uh, system and, and the, uh, achievement gap. Basically, I think that, because our first thing we need to do is to address, uh, some of the issues. Say for instance, a lot of the classes, basically, they have to have a relevant the classes, basically, they have to have relevant classes for the students, which I think, as far as the achievement gap, and dealing with black students, if the subjects are not interesting and relevant, then that is definitely, basically, will not help. We need to also have more, better relationships with parents, and the teachers, and students. And they need to come together and work on that. We need to actually have personalized training where necessary for the students that need a little extra help. These are things that I think that we need to do in our school system to actually improve it and have better oversight. And what I found out, basically, after meeting with some of the different people that were actually involved in the educational system, basically, they said no one is doing oversight. They have programs in place that can actually improve it, but no one is checking to see, to make sure. So I think we need to actually look into doing, you know, making sure that is done properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
All right. This is very interesting, because I'll just, and my mind is all over the place, and I'm trying, I need to get this all in. My mind is all over the place, because, you know, yes, folks want an elected school board, and everybody thinks that that's just, that's going to work everything out. So I want to point out to everybody that who is the school system failing? They're not failing white kids. I'm just going to be a straight shooter to you. They're failing black kids. I got a son that's in first grade, Asheville City Schools, a daughter that's a sophomore in high school, Asheville City Schools, and they're doing great. But the rest of our kids are not. And so when you talk about how does an elected school board alleviate that problem, let's just not act like the previous iterations of our school board didn't help contribute to this situation. So I get that's why people want to go to an elected system, but I will also point out that you're looking at somebody on this stage right now in me, that is the exception to the rule. Let's not just act like we've had black people serving on council and multiple iterations of two and three serving at a time over the history of the city. That hadn't happened. That just started happening. Prior to me coming on council, the city was led by five white men, who led all the policy in the city. Now, we've had the most conversations about equity and inclusion, and the achievement gap that we've, more of those than we've had in the past. And we have one of the most diverse school boards that we've had in the past. Now, if the masses want to move to an elected system, I can understand that. And if that's where the masses want to go, I could support it. But I will say this. Be careful what you ask for, because it's my kids that are falling by the wayside because of what's happened through our school board system and our school system right now. And let's not just think that because we changed that, it's going to change all of the systemics that have put us in this position. Everything that we've talked about today and all of our other forums have been basically about the systemic issues that continue to hamper black Americans in this country, and that includes our educational system. So it's more than just the school board.
All right. Let's see. We have some additional listener questions. I want to jump to a question from Brian, who is listening. Asheville is losing the battle to drug addiction. What can the city do to alleviate this problem? And we'll start with Kim on this question.
This is an important question. I went to pre-COVID last fall, a event in the basement of Trinity Methodist Church on Haywood Road, and heard a presentation from Buncombe County Health and Human Services staff about how we got to this place, because we're starting to be able to look back. And this situation is very personal to me, because I have people in my close, personal family who are addicted to opioids. And it happened because of an accident, and then prescribed pain pills, and it got out of hand. And it's caused a massive amount of destruction and broken relationships, and broken hearts, and loss of housing. And I know I'm not alone in seeing the impact of that in our community. One of the things that we're going to have to do is, as a state, hold accountable our pharmaceutical companies for getting us in this mess and not being accountable. But the government's not going to get us out of this situation. We're going to have to take care of each other. And that's why I support the efforts of steady collective and harm reduction efforts. We need to take care of people while they're getting well, so they have the opportunity to get well. And dignified community services is part of that work. Right now, I see two huge containers in West Asheville that people can dispose of sharps, which are not just used for opioids. We need them available around the city, wherever you see a city trash and recycling bin. There's small lot containers that we can use as a community for cleanup, and that's a big concern in my neighborhood of West Asheville. But harm reduction efforts are our best way to take care of our people while we get well as a community, and reduce harm and reduce the loss of life.
Sage?
Thank you. So just as a general principle, I want to say that when dealing with addiction in communities, we have to deal with the addiction, not the addicts. We have to fight the addiction, not the people that are addicted. And I think that's not always done. We are lashing out against those who are currently homeless or suffering, instead of handling the problems of why they've gotten there. And I think that's where our work should focus. So there is also a decline in access to programs right now because of COVID. So if you were attending a regular or a daily program, it may be closed right now. So we're seeing a spike. And naturally, when there's more things going on, like pandemic, and stress, and job loss, we're actually seeing an uptick in drug use and needs in the community. So at the time when we're seeing less support, we're also seeing an increased need. So one of the things the city can really focus on is transitional services. So the Housing First model comes to mind, and there's a current project being vetted right now, where those who have been experiencing homelessness or addiction are being prioritized in a housing project with wraparound services, so that people can make the transition from living in these states to living a more typical lifestyle that we're seeing, where they can care for themselves. And it's not A to B. There's a lot that happens in between, and that's the wraparound services and the transitional care that folks need. So we need that in a housing model. We need that in a recovery model. We also have situations where we have separated men and women in care. And so there are fewer agencies that are able to care for men right now, and because of the population overlap. So we need specific services to grow in that direction. We also need houses, so there are caretaking environments. I think in the past, we called them halfway houses, but really, reformative houses, where young girls can bunk up together with a mother or a caretaker at the house that helps them through the programs, helps them transition, and get to and from services. So more of these kinds of needs are needed. I do support the steady collective and their work. I think harm reduction is key. And again, we really just have to fight the addiction and not the addict.
Thank you. Sandra?
Okay. What I will say, and I'm not really, I would say, aburst on this particular topic, especially where, because the way I look at it is this, I do realize there are lots of programs, basically, as far as harm reduction programs to help people, you know, get off the drugs and things like this. But my concern is this. I would like to see council, someone do something to do more to control the influx of the opioids coming into the community. I don't know what is being addressed, or whatever, from that, you know, perspective. But I think if we could actually reduce that, then that could actually help the overall problem. I don't know. Like I said, I'm not really, you know, versed in a lot of the issues of drug abuse and things like that. So that's my perspective. And of course, we definitely need to treat, basically, the addiction, and not treat the people, you know, because it's an addiction. That's what it is, just like alcohol. So we definitely need to have the resources to do that. But I would like to see more done in trying to reduce the influx of opioids in our community.
Thank you. Keith?
All right. First off, I'll say, I want to commend our county, because Buncombe County filed a federal lawsuit against the pharmaceutical industry's largest manufacturers and distributors that are responsible for fueling, what we consider responsible for fueling, local opioid epidemics. I think that's one thing that's happened, that the city couldn't do on its own. I'm glad the county took that up. Secondly, I'd just say, you know, I won't give a long drawn-out answer, but literally and merely support the organizations that are out there that are fighting that, whether that be through funding, or through policy. We need to be able to do that, and continue that, and build on those partnerships, and support the work that the county is doing with their lawsuit, and support the work of advocates, and nonprofits, and people who are on the ground, making the work happen for changing people's lives. And we need to be a part of that in any way possible that we can, whether financially or through policy.
Thank you. Rich?
Thank you for this question. I watched a brother-in-law struggle with addiction to pills and meth and opiates for decades. And every time he got out of jail, he would go to these extremes, like moving to another town, cutting off all his connections to everybody he's known, and attempts to try to avoid being tempted back in. And he always, still to this day, fails. And it's not because he's not strong. The addiction is just stronger than him, and it's beating him again and again. He's a white guy from a middle-class family. But because this opiate addiction particularly is a problem that runs across classes and races, millionaires and mansions fall into it. And it's not because they're weak. What we do know, though, is that positive community supports, and services, and security, especially housing and income security, are tools that do help in people's personal fights against this. And, you know, as a city, for so many reasons, we have a responsibility, it's our job, to get as many people as possible into housing security, job security, income security, into, connected to the services that they need, whether it's a bus that takes them to a treatment meeting, or a house that they can go back to afterwards. And there's so many reasons that we need this. But to give more people the tools that they need in their own battles against their addictions is going to fall on us. And I've said this before, and I'm going to say it again. In this instance, the cavalry is late coming, if it's coming at all. We're the cavalry here locally, in the city, in the county, in this region. And we are the closest to the problem that can pull together and make the solutions happen.
Thank you, Rich.
Yes, thank you all of the candidates. And unfortunately, we're out of time for any more questions from listeners and participants, but they can continue to send those, and we'll get those to the candidates for their answers. Now, we'll move on to our closing statements, and the candidate order was determined by a random selection of a third-party website. The order will be Keith Young, Rich Lee, Sandra Kilgore, Sage Turner, Kim Roney. First up, Keith Young.
Thank you. I've been on the job. I'm not here to tell voters what I think they need to hear to jockey a vote. Too much of that is happening right now in the White House. I ran to serve our community, all of it. I've looked at the budgets. I know what our outlook is. I've been fighting for five years behind closed doors and on Front Street, tooth and nail, for all kinds of changes. And I don't sell wolf tickets. I'll tell you how it is. I'm not going to sugarcoat it to make you feel better. And we need more of that in the government. In this moment, our city, much like many other cities around this country, face tremendous challenges. And we approach this election fighting for what Joe Biden says is the soul of our nation, at a time where many families in Asheville are facing eviction, lost wages, stagnant economy, all due to COVID-19. And we are all stretched so very thin that we have to realize, how do we move forward? I'm running for reelection to Asheville City Council to continue the work of building up families and addressing racial equity head-on. We must move to improve the lives of all Ashvilleans, from small business owners to bus riders to our homeless population. I am committed to Asheville's success for every citizen. My efforts on these have basically moved Asheville forward in a different path. And since I've been in office, we've done a lot of good work. We've paved more roads. We've built more sidewalks. We funded more affordable housing. We've done this at the greatest levels of any time in our city's history. And not only does this work need to continue, there's so much more that needs to be addressed. We need to be addressing climate change, protecting our tree canopy, addressing the culture of policing, which we talked about here today. And lastly, basically rebuilding the economy that supports rebuilding a local economy that supports the diverse efforts of all of its citizens, so that the future of Asheville looks beyond tourism, and helps move us forward together. I think we can do this. I hope that you will give me the opportunity to continue to amplify your voice, and to continue to serve this community, and to continue to shoot it straightforward, and tell voters not what I think they need to hear, what they want to hear, but what they need to hear, which is the truth. So, thank you. And I look forward to hopefully serving you again.
Thank you, Keith. Closing statement, Rich Lee.
Thank you. First of all, I need to apologize. Earlier, in another question, I said my kids were in second through fourth grade, but they're actually in third through fifth. The trouble with raising four kids in 2020 is that time becomes irrelevant. So thank you all for Carolina Public Press and Asheville FM for having us on. My name is Rich Lee. For the last nine years, I've been a financial advisor. Before that, I was a retail worker here in Asheville, and an high school teacher. Before that, I was a Peace Corps volunteer in the Kingdom of Jordan. I graduated with bachelor's and master's degrees from Western Carolina, including a bachelor's in Spanish, Muchisimas Gracias a los Tradictores. I'm running for city council because I believe that the city's in a series of crises, including many of its own doing. But they're not ideological crises. As you've heard, there's not a lot of ideological daylight between us here today. Our crises are management crises. We need people who can marry principles and commitment to financial experience and management experience, people who can see a project through, especially when it comes to restoring and improving our infrastructure, to managing our growth, and to building a shared prosperity that is equitable and inclusive, and encompasses more of our residents. I think I have the experience and the budget know-how to see our goals through, and that's why I'm running. I have endorsements from the AFL-CIO, the Sierra Club, Asheville Firefighters, and the Asheville Buncombe and North Carolina Teachers Unions. I look forward to sharing more of what I care about you as, over the next three weeks. Please make a plan to vote. Thank you. And thank you again for all of your votes.
Thank you. And Sandra Kilgore, you are next with your closing statement.
Okay. Listen, I really enjoyed the forum today, and I would like to basically sort of just say a few words. The reason I decided to run for Asheville City Council is because I felt like we were no longer a community that I remember growing up in. I felt that there was a lot of separate, the community was not united, and there was a lot of divisiveness. I felt that I could actually bridge the gap of communication within the community, bring us together. Because as we talked about earlier, we have so many issues that the city is dealing with right now, tons of issues. A lot of it can be actually resolved if we start doing a better job in communicating and working together. The Asheville, the city of Asheville has so many different programs. You know, we talked about the drugs, the housing, the tons of programs. But what it is, I feel that we actually need to start connecting the dots with those programs. We need to start working together as a city, because a lot of the programs would be more effective if we start sort of merging, and maybe we could sort of get better results in doing that. So my platform, one of the top issues on my platform is united in the city, coming together, taking care of each other. Because at the end of the day, we all want the same thing. We want a clean, safe environment for our families, and we want a city that's economically sustainable in order to support the initiatives that we need to grow. And we can do this together, and I think that's what we definitely should work on. So thank you very much. If you want more information about my campaign, please visit me at electsandrakilgore.org. And thank you very much. I look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Sandra. Sage Turner, closing statement. You're next.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to 103, 3 Asheville FM, and Carolina Public Press, and to the JMP Pro TV for translating into Spanish today. and to the JMP Pro TV for translating into Spanish today. I'll give a little bit of an intro and closing. So I'm Sage Turner, and I'm running for city council because I think we can take better care of each other and better care of the community, better care of the environment, and really how we grow and how we all thrive. We're facing a lot of growth right now. I'm concerned that we are being outweighed by tourism and that it is impacting our community negatively. And we're falling behind. Our children are falling behind. And we have a lot of issues at a grassroots level that need to be taken care of. So my key platforms are accessible, affordable housing and equity, working to strengthen and preserve, protect our local economy, environmental and educational justice, and responsible and strategic growth that informs fiscal sustainability. So my background is pretty strong in these areas, and it's a lot of why I'm running. So I have 20 years of governance experience. I've been serving on boards and committees and commissions the entire time. I currently chair the city's Affordable Housing Committee and the city's Downtown Commission. And that means I'm involved in everything from hotel and large apartment project review, e-scooters and public space, housing bonds, affordable housing policies and incentives, food insecurity, outdoor events, all things. And I'm very involved, and I love this city, and I want to help move it forward and help better care for our community. And I'm seeing lots of alarms, and I'm concerned. So I'm putting myself out there. I'm offering my time. I'm a single, full-time parent that just recently empty-nested. And I work downtown for the French Broad Food Co-op. I've dedicated my life to working for nonprofits and organizations that move the community forward. And I'm here to help. So I hope that you'll put me to work. Thank you. So I will share my website is sageforasheville.com, and my email is sageforasheville@gmail. And I've put a lot of time and effort into updating those. So if you are wondering more about my positions or videos or testimonials and endorsements, there's a lot of information there. Please check it out. And thank you.
Thank you, Sage. And for our final closing statement, it comes from Kim Roney.
Thank you so much for everyone who's tuning in today or afterwards to catch up. Thank you to the Carolina Public Press, 103.3 Asheville FM. And thank you, gracias, to J and Pro for translation today. My name is Kim Roney. I'm a piano teacher, service industry worker, and community advocate who walks bikes and rides the bus here in Asheville. I understand that so many of us are struggling to make ends meet on stagnant wages. The tourism industry strains our natural resources and infrastructure. We need a just transition through the emergencies of the COVID-19 pandemic from climate change, systemic racism, and economic instability. I'm running because of work we need to do to ensure a resilient community, includes urgent action to take better care of the planet and each other. On December 9th, 2014, then Councilman Gordon Smith asked me, while we were doing a community radio interview, if I would please come to City Hall and be one of the people to speak in public comment about the need for affordable housing, because he anticipated if the people who needed affordable housing the most didn't speak up soon, we were going to end up in affordable housing crisis. And we have. From that moment, December 9th, 2014, until now, I've attended all but three city council meetings, attending 12 to 15 boards and commission meetings every month and reporting back to the community, because I know so many of my friends and neighbors can't be in the room when decisions are being made about us without us. I'm committed to the work for climate justice, reimagining public safety, fair, free regional transportation network, participatory budgeting, deeply affordable housing, education equity, and holding the TDA accountable as we move towards hotel occupancy tax reform. I'm endorsed by Councilwoman Misneeka Smith, Councilman Brian Haines, Reverend Amy Cantrell, the Sierra Club, Sunrise Movement Asheville, Sunrise Movement North Carolina, Equality and See, the Buncombe County and Asheville City Teachers Association, the Center for Biological Diversity, the Firefighters, and the WNC Central Labor Council, and many neighbors like yourself. But I can't do this work alone. So early voting starts October 15th. That's this Thursday and runs through the end of the month. And we need you to text a peer, a first-time voter, and an elder, and make sure that everybody has an opportunity and a way to get to the polls during early voting to ensure your registration and to make sure that our votes are counted. This is an exciting time for us to be about it, being better. I'm in the work with you, and I'll be with you no matter what happens on November 3rd. Thank you so much. KimRoneyForAsheville.com.
Thank you so much to all of the candidates and to our audience members, including those who submitted questions. Thank you for joining us for this debate. As we were just reminded, early voting starts this Thursday. Absentee via mail voting is already underway. Election Day is November 3rd. And we'll see what happens then, or perhaps a few days later, given how this may play out this year. We thanks, thanks to everyone. If anybody has questions about the voting process, please see Carolina Public Press's website, where we have a special tab for elections information to help people to understand the complexities of the process this year. KP.
Yes, and I want to remind our listeners that you can watch or listen to this replay of the debate at our websites. That's ashvillefm.org or at carolinapublicpress.org. And we want to thank all of the candidates and all of the listeners who attended for their time. Thank you so much for tuning in.